Stand and pledge allegiance to the flag, please. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. Okay, welcome to uh two thousand twenty-four. Unfamiliar faces here from previous years. Um for those of you who uh online, is it only Scott?
Only Scott.
Only Scott? So everyone knows this is the January ninth meeting of the Town of Canada planning board. Uh do I have to introduce everyone? Let me do that. Sure. Uh we got our recording secretary, Karine Hatch, our technical assistant, uh Kim Burkett. And we're a little short on people in person as far as uh board members. Got Scott Neil remote. Got Tim Schneider, our our alternate board member who is now stepping up to be an active voting member this evening. And we have Mark Tolbert, Amanda Van Laken, I'm Chuck Euler, Kristen Smith, everyone knows, Lance Bravant, everyone knows. And last but far from least, Chris Nadler, attorney. Okay, um we will go through the agenda as published. Uh we have a little bit of housekeeping to take care of upfront, so appreciate the your patience uh. Uh where we take care of those things since this is the first meeting of the new year and we have to uh. Get reorganized as much as we can and we'll take care of that hopefully quickly. And then we'll move on to the agenda items. And uh we have a couple new site plans and a request for an extension. And uh that being said, let's move on to the first item. Well, i- anybody here want to address the board regarding an issue that's not on the board, uh not on the agenda? Should be under our privilege of the floor. There, nobody here. Okay, uh for uh. For purposes of notifying you where the emergency exits are, they are to the left and right. So uh take due note of that. Uh there were no legal notices that had to be published for tonight's hearing since there's no public hearings. And with that, we'll just move right into our organizational meeting. And the first item in the agenda is the appointment of a vice chair. I will accept the nomination or nominations. From the board for vice chair.
I would like to nominate um Bob McCourse.
Have motions. Are there any further nominations in the board? Here in none, all in favor of Bob? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Uh our secretary, Karine, um she is up for reappointment. Do I have a? A motion to re-nominate Karine. I might not nomination every nominee. Okay, okay.
A second.
Got a motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Post. Okay, down to our engineering firm uh for the planning board. Do I have a suggestion as to where engineering firm should be for? We may better.
Oh. Oh. Oh, please.
I nominate M R B and Lance Bravant.
Sorry, you're not.
I don't.
I I would like to know.
I'll nominate. And Lance. Okay, section. Further nominations? Oh, there are none. Okay, all in favor of M R B? Say aye.
Aye.
Welcome back, M R B. You've treated us well. Okay, uh. We have some options for this. Legal counsel.
You don't, it's your problem.
I would be proud to nominate Chris Nadler as our legal counsel for the planning board for twenty twenty-four. Second?
A second.
Okay, do I have further nomination or suggestion? Thank you for the audience too. Somebody else.
I don't need to be a target for that.
Alrighty, uh here we know for the nominations, all in favor of Chris. Say aye.
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 And uh. I'm gonna hold off on the adopting the rules of procedure because we're, there's probably gonna be some discussion on that and I don't wanna have. Our guests have to sit through that. Bureau. So uh let's, last thing we have to do under the organization is just adopt our calendar for twenty twenty-four. Think everybody got. Uh the latest calendar, it should be the twelve eighteen revision showing the board meetings. Of the year. Someone wanna accept that as our calendars? Okay, second. Okay, you have a motion second. Let's uh vote on it, all in favor?
Aye.
Right, well, as I said, we'll hold off on the rules of procedure until uh later in the meeting and we'll move right into the agenda. Which uh first include that a site plan from Adrian Down of forty-four sixty-four County Route sixteen. Uh and he's wishing solely in-ground pool. A uh fence up, patio up, put a shed up and uh. Eat property. So mentioned and Mr. Ashdown went to the Z V A last month. Yeah, back in December and uh got a variance from the uh Z V A. So you're here before the planning board tonight for your site plan. Hello, welcome. Alright, tell us a little bit about. Uh it's a unique property.
Yes.
No doubt, no doubt about that. Uh tell us about property and what you wanna do and uh if we have any question, we'll certainly ask.
Well, we actually have all the building work done.
Oh, that's right, this, yeah.
Yes, we actually got the.
Okay. This is an after the fact.
Like, can we just say for the record about that? They'll put a pool in. Yes, we we got the plant, we got the the permit approved and the um permit for uh the fences approved. So we went ahead and did the construction and then we got stop work or throw work again done.
And you were told to.
The total of the variance because the pool is considered actually in the front yard. Uh not the not the backyard.
In there. Okay.
Permit was issued in error, is what my understanding. Okay, as opposed to the applicant building without its permits and change here as for forgiveness, that's important to be revealed.
So um. We're looking at something after fact. He, as I said, he was successful in getting his Z V A variances. Um so yeah, the pool was installed back in July, right?
Yes, yes, well, August.
Okay. Uh I guess in looking at the plan, the only, I guess you were able to adjust the septic system. I think the uh uh pump was in the location where the pool is, was. The pump was in the location where the pool is, so you were able to to move that. I think he moved it off to the north somehow.
They they, I'm not aware as a pump was actually moved, but um. Uh the septic, the actual leach field is is uh and north of the way that the the patio of the pool are. And the septic line runs uh so parallel to the house away from the pool.
Okay.
So pretty much like that, that plan, that's that's where the um the pump and the the leach field are.
And the pool is out where the porch is shown there.
Uh no, no, so the side of it where the.
Okay. For the deck is about here?
Yes.
Or further here?
Yeah, I actually have an aerial view of it if that helps.
Uh what, it's on your phone? And that's it, I think. In the pool, I, there were two dimensions referenced throughout the uh. Information was submitted. One was sixteen by thirty-two, the other sixteen by thirty?
It's a sixteen by thirty.
Thirty-two.
Sixteen by thirty, not sixteen by thirty-two? Yeah, sixteen by thirty.
Okay. You got that, Lance, is a, I guess a condition, the pool size. Condition.
Condition. Sixteen by thirty throughout.
If you do the Z L D on this, it's like. Yeah, I have here a review of the.
Yes, instead of the, instead of thirty-two.
E C B uh. I guess uh you looked at the landscape plan if I, if I remember your minutes and uh. You're concerned about the lighting also. Believe you, you wanna make sure it was uh dark sky compliant. And your landscape plan was concerned about species, a little bit as far as some of the non-native.
Grass.
Have you done all your landscaping?
Yes.
You got it in since July?
Okay. Little light on landscape. I said a little light on landscaping here.
Yes.
That's the joke.
Okay, so I I assume you had similar region control that was installed in the pool. Assume that the site is essentially stabilized in terms of any, any earthwork activity that you did um. The pool backwash. I guess would go down the hill. Uh where, if and when you.
Where that channel has been um but but by the side to the north with the porch, it's just filled with stone.
Certainly.
That's a natural.
I don't, where do you feel there's any shoreline guideline or seen a few shed issues with this? I think it's fucked. Back in the, back in the woods, pretty tight. You can't see, can't see from the road level in the lake. Lance, did you include the resolution uh about the the variances being noted on the plans?
Nope, I don't know.
I'm also looking, unless you're really, really sure it's sixteen by thirty, you got three different pool dimensions. Maybe just say the plan shall be corrected to the correct. Existing pool size. Twenty by forty, thirty-two by sixteen, thirty by sixteen.
It was a small, it was a smaller of the three.
Okay. And I have no idea what plan is gonna be the plan that's gonna get signed. I mean, there's a lot of different plans. There's an existing. Survey, I guess, and then there's, I assume it'd be this plan.
It's one that says existing conditions plan.
Was, is considered existing conditions, no?
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking, but it's got pool twenty by four. Oh, this is Scott, the Hollanders' plan that you. It's Scott.
The very original one, yes.
And then you just superimposed where the pool was, so that's probably.
We agree that the plan that was up on the. The board, uh I think the other one, is is the uh plan that should probably have signatures and, you know, record plan, right?
Let me go this way.
Okay, board, anything else?
This looks, oh.
I do not have any.
Scott, you have anything?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay. All right, well then uh let's onward and upward. Oh, we've got a type-two seeker. Excuse me, anybody in the audience? At least I asked. Uh okay, let's move on to the seeker. It's a type-two seeker. Let's bundle it with the uh site plan. And motion.
I'll make a motion to approve C P N twenty-three. And is it zero, one, zero, two, or one, twenty? The um.
I think it's one.
One oh two. One oh two, that forty-four sixty-four County Road sixteen, do the seeker type-two and the single-stage site plan with.
Yeah, so.
It is one twenty. Okay, sorry. Thank you.
So. It's a C P.
Two, three, so.
Two, zero.
Yeah, I, for the board's purview, conditions as number two and number three, in my opinion, should be omitted. One requires the development, and it's already constructed, so that doesn't need to occur. The other one is a soil stabilization. Surety, obviously that doesn't need to occur either, even if it's done. So we keep one and then I've added three. Uh the second one being the site plan is going to be revised to reflect the correct pool size. Uh signatures, uh three, it's going to be revised to identify the, the approved variances, expanded by the Z V A and some plans. And then four is that, that as currently the three twenty-six, twenty-three wayside site plans last revised for eighteen twenty-three are revised by signature.
Okay.
So, so this applicant goes for the town planning board chair and who else?
Understand, they don't. You don't understand uh. Lance, could you? Maybe you could.
So this plan right here will need to be updated to add a signature line. For the chairman's sign so that we have official record of what plan was approved. That's one of the changes. The other one, the other two are basically notes to the plan. One, identifying the correct pool size. I think there's. A couple of different variations of that. We referenced earlier, the smaller one. So if it's just a matter of deleting the other sizes, they'll only keep in the one. However you can do it, we just wanna make sure the correct pool size is identified on that plan. All right, and then the last one is adding a note regarding the variances. So you received approval from the Z V A on December nineteenth. We're asking that that variance be identified and the approval date be listed on that plan.
And how do I do that?
Oh, you could either have whoever created the plan or my thought is is just add it on as a note, you know, and rate it so it's legible on your plan. That should be the change.
Excellent.
Yeah.
This is plan.
Wayside.
Wayside. So.
You're still.
Okay.
Put a sign, put a.
Okay, let's move uh, we've got a motion. In four conditions, did I get a second? Okay, Scott, let's take your second. Alright, since you're roughing it down there. Uh we got a motion, a second, further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Close, motion carries. The famous Ashdown, you are. Good to go or?
Okay.
Good to done. Confirmed. Alrighty. Next, we've got um. Somebody that we've seen before. Uh we've got uh Creekview. Greg Fister and Paul Calucci from the DeMarco Group. Owner of property on County Route ten. Seeking approvals for an amended preliminary overall subdivision plan and amended final site plan phase two of Creekview Apartments. In the M B O zoning revisions reduced. Phase two from twelve buildings with eight units for a total of ninety-six units to nine buildings with eight units for a total of seventy-two units. Uh previous approvals are expired. Uh variants were sought and granted at the December nineteenth Z V A meeting. So, hey stranger.
Welcome, Mr. Chairman. My name is Paul Calucci with the DeMarco Group. And joining me as Mr. Chairman mentioned is Greg Forster. Uh Greg oversees our affordable housing division. Um some new faces on the board since I think the last time we were here, Mr. Chairman Brad. Uh project phase two was approved in May of twenty. We have been seeking funding from H C R, New York State Partner and Program that we deliver affordable housing. Uh that funding was not granted, although we scored as high as you can score. Um as they allocate their monies around the state, unfortunately, Creekview was passed over. Uh Greg has recently submitted application for the latest round of funding. Uh we have sought local support, which we've obtained from the town. Uh regional support uh from Senators and Humming and we have uh support at the governor level. This year and we're confident um that funding will be granted. As the project was previously presented to you, um. We have scaled it back and reduced three buildings and the reason for that was right sizing the project for market absorption for. Feedback that Greg received from H C R. If you have any questions, Greg can go deeper into that. Um the orientation of the buildings are identical to what you previously approved. We, as Mr. Chairman mentioned, were at the zoning board in December. And receive the necessary variances for internal setback to parking lots and roadways. Um we're, we're the proud operators of phase one. We've had a waiting list of uh residents numbering over a hundred. For this next phase, uh we're very confident. That we can deliver this successfully, continue to operate it successfully. The project that we, our first phase was the first net. Um for passive house project for multi-unit development in New York State. This project will exceed those uh thresholds and will be net zero. So we're incorporating solar, geothermal, uh the highest level of energy. Um efficiency that we can that exists for for these types of buildings. Uh we're poison-ready, uh we need your approval. So that we are shovel-ready when that funding comes in. And then we can expect to start construction on this project, hopefully in uh the summer of uh two thousand twenty-four. So I know you're, many of you are familiar with the project. If you have any questions, myself and Greg are here to answer this.
For the board's informations, uh applicants submitted. Uh I guess at my direction, because the mixed-use overlay district code under which, right, it's mixed-use sort of. Uh under which this project was originally approved, requires the town board essentially to have a chance to object. If they think the changes being proposed are significant, um as we, we did, uh put this in front of the town board and there was no objection. Um the Creekview preliminary changes, it said it shows it's just removal of three buildings. Uh they did it in color, so it's, you know, nothing else is changing, is my understanding. Is that accurate?
That's right.
Okay, so uh I guess to make this happen, we, we have to approve the preliminary overall, right? Lance, and then. I think that's right.
That's correct.
Uh and also approve the final phase two. Uh or amend the final basis. Should count for the reduction in, no, in units, okay. I think we understand that. Uh I guess I sort of paused when I read previous approvals are expired. Are they expired or are they?
They are. Um May of twenty, phase two was was granted, it was preliminary, amended preliminary overall. Final phase two was granted May of twenty. We had to secure planning board chair signature within six months. Did, unfortunately, funding wasn't in place, so we came back in February of twenty-one to renew that approval, even though we renewed the approval once without. Came through the new application process. Now we've changed the project to scale back. From nine buildings, um or, I'm sorry, twelve buildings to nine buildings. So that's the amended preliminary overall final phase two uh new approvals that we received.
And when they're at geothermal revision to the plan to allow for the installation of the geothermal? And that was a further amendment to the plan?
That was originally incorporated into the previous approvals. We haven't deviated off that.
Okay. Okay. Again, Lance, when uh you're talking there, Chris, uh so we have a resolution before us for the amended overall, preliminary overall.
Yep.
Okay, uh which takes care of the reduction in units and then the phase two.
Okay, and the conditions for your, for the board's version, you were basically copying things from the last. Preliminary overall, and then you can tell us about the twenty twenty-one, just being consistent with what was required that we in that uh plan's plan at that time. So I kept the same four conditions, which are fairly generic. General from previous.
Ward, any questions?
Or the um. The reduction, uh and it's not plan-related, but. Related to. Or units. So you had said that you have a waiting list right now for about one hundred applicants and then this phase is. Supporting seventy-two units. And I understand the reduction in the number of buildings and the number of units is based on, you know, the funding availability. Is there consideration future to potentially add those three buildings back or?
Oh, that's, that's likely that we would add them back in this phase.
But.
Future. As this project was originally developed, there's four phases.
Mm-hmm.
Uh there was always consideration for three phases of affordable and a market-based phase.
Mm-hmm.
Uh again, we continue to study the market, look at where money is going to be targeted. Be close communication with our partners at H C R and would love to build third phase where it's um. Two units, that's stuff that Greg is constantly in contact with them for, you know, cost of construction as we know. The reason, one of the reasons this project got scaled back is construction costs have gone up significantly. So they're balancing their, around the state during on more smaller projects.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else on the board? Greg, when do you think you'll hear on?
Twenty million dollar question, Mr. Chairman.
And I knew you, you're the twenty million dollar man.
Transparent as uh other government agencies, uh but we're hopeful in um February or as late as March.
Oh.
Then, yeah, it it went in the first week of November. And hopefully we'll find out in February. Um all says, be in the ground as early as June.
Or they just give thumbs up, thumbs down?
Thumbs up, thumbs down.
Okay.
You get a call if you've been awarded, you get a Dear John letter.
Well, good luck.
Thanks.
Uh anybody from the audience uh have any questions, concerns? Um Lance, I know you, M R B, looked at it. I, I didn't see your review letter, but you said there were no technical issues.
Correct, so basically we reaffirmed what we had previously approved from, from twenty twenty and then in twenty twenty-one. At that time, all of our condition comments had been addressed. We actually issued approval of the SWIP. And um that was four approval letter, plan just never made it all the way through the conditions. Um I re, I threw this, this alternative amended plan, which for the most part is just removing a couple of buildings. I confirmed some of the documents that were provided. They are revised, updated date, which is something that I would ask to do as part of a reapproval. So I didn't have any additional offers.
Hurrius, same way and hurrius is going up, so this result.
I think one of the questions from highway superintendent was regards to the sizing of the stormwater facility. Well, it was sized to handle the full buildout um of all your phases plus this, this space, which now has been reduced. And then Bury service.
That's right, we didn't scale the pond back.
It's in, it's enlarged, so I think we're.
One of the conditions and rightfully so is the five-foot sidewalk along County Route ten. I know the town has taken. I know the town has taken. When Doug was here, a lot of heat about people saying, why don't they come put aside, finish that sidewalk? And of course, like I say, it was part of phase two, it was a condition that, that be. Um, approved, turned into concrete. Um, the, yeah. Nice to have it on. Sooner or later, but uh, again, we'll, we'll, I guess we'll stick to our condition that it be. With the construction of phase two, I guess that's what we're intending, we need it. Okay, anything else? Uh, there's no speaker involved with this, so let's do two motions, one for the amended preliminary and one for the, um. I'll make a motion to amend the preliminary overall. Site plan to incorporate the changes discussed here this evening. Subject to. Work conditions, I guess that's sort of been carrying on. With that, uh, overall, so I make that motion, I have a second, second. A motion second for discussion, thought, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, I want to take care of the final amended. Make the motion for C P N twenty-three dash one one zero, amended final base site plan approval resolution.
I have ten, I circle two. Um, all of them were the same, same as before. Including the nine and ten, but I wasn't, I'm, I'm, my suggestion is to leave nine and ten on, because I just, I don't recall how. No recall plans that were provided, I, I missed it, um. Does road names have been identified? I know that was one of the things in phase two when we came through the first time. We were struggling with getting through, I couldn't recall throughout the events. It's shown that, so that was a condition previously I designed for this one, because I didn't, I forgot to. And the other one was depict the location, oh, it's G O Ls, it's a geothermal Ls. I wasn't sure if they had been added yet or not, I couldn't call them. Those are the two previously that I suggested keep on for that purpose, but just to make sure they're the right.
Yep. Yeah, so they didn't conflict with any utilities or any easements, that was the reason that you guys called that out, yes.
That shows, creep few drives. I guess.
I can't remember why we had that sort of originally.
That's.
So those were the, those same ten was, and ones that were previously approved. With both original buildings.
Okay. The, the nature approval mark is a thinker of the motion.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. Tim's brought up a question on the findings.
Second to last page, item sixty-seven. Touchdown variance from T B A December nineteen twenty twenty-four, probably twenty-three.
Yeah, good catch.
I'll make a change.
Okay, good catch. All right, uh, I have a motion for Mark, uh. Timson, she were diligent and. Your second, okay, I have a motion second. For discussion, all in favor? Okay, good luck, guys.
Thank you, appreciate your support.
Thank you.
Do a nice job out there.
Thank you.
Okay. Next we move on to, uh, a request for an extension of R L builders. Uh, over at the Piercebrook subdivision. Uh, they're seeking a, their first ninety-day extension on the final subdivision approved for sections two A and two B. Uh, waiting for plans to be signed, the original approval is June twenty-eighth, the hundred eighty days. Inspired back in December, but I think the request was submitted prior to the expiration. So that's why we're willing to uh, listen to the requests this evening. So we are. Pleasure to have the. That was a whole, a whole powerhouse here.
We're all, we're all.
Are you trying to outnumber us?
Yeah, we were all at a, a great meeting earlier today. So we just rolled over here, it's super fun.
Where'd you have dinner?
Uh, we were at Collerhorn, uh, which is in Naples, uh.
Oh.
He's a great guy and we're trying to support him as his, as his place, uh, good for him. Uh, they ran into some trouble and he's rebuilt it and, and he's just unbelievable for the community, so. We held a, a meeting there with all the staff and he was, he was great, they're lovely people.
Good, well, you're back in Canandaigua now, so, tell us about Piercebrook, how are things going out there?
Things are going extremely well, just to update the board, uh, projects, uh, very, very successful, um. We, we opened up, uh, our project and completed our model, uh, this year. Um, in the early part of the spring, uh, we're nearly sold out of the per section. And we've only got six units left, um, so. Um, this uh, extension and actually we're, uh, we've been working with town staff to clear up one of the. Uh, conditions, we had a conflict with one of our conditions, uh, condition fourteen, so. We have a resolution hopefully for the, for the board this evening on that, but. The extension is purely a procedural issue for us, um, we are ready to have the plan signed. And we're waiting on agencies at this point, um, with the Ontario County as well Department of Health. Um, and then we can complete the signature process. We do expect to start construction on the second phase. Um, immediately as the weather breaks, um, we really need the inventory. Uh, so the project's been very, very successful and then the other issue was. Um, when we were going through all of our, uh, conditions moving into the project, the project is phased. Um, so, um, very typically we would be constructing phase two A. Um, and then, um, good phasing protocol requires us to basically complete that phase when we get to about eighty percent of that. We then move on to phase, uh, three, which would be. Uh, phase two B, uh, in this instance, from the labeling perspective. And we just noticed there's a conflict in our original conditions. Um, and so that's the other part of the resolution this evening. Um, when I was speaking with Chris earlier, just as, just to give a date, uh, to that, you know, we expect within twenty-four months of. Of our dedication of phase two A to be moving on to our final, uh, phase. We, for the most part, finish everything within eighteen-month timeframe, but twenty-four months is within. Some other construction cycle, so. We're here for the board, really just to get that extension, but I wanted to. Give the board the confidence that that extension is purely, uh, procedural, we're waiting for Ontario County to complete its. Process of, of reviewing our plans, uh, and we love them, uh, in front of you for signature. Everything on our end is done and, and ready to go at this stage. Um, so, um, with that, uh, if the board doesn't have any questions, uh, or. I'm open to, to questions if the board has them. So we're looking to a great, uh, twenty twenty-four.
You said you're waiting for Ontario County to give their approval to what?
The sewer, um, uh, sorry, and third, and it's just, uh, they, on the engineering plans, they have to complete their sewer review. Uh, and Jack is, um, you know, he's, he's backlog, um, so he's finished with. I believe he's doing uptake, uh, right now on reviewing our plans, getting in our final comments. And then we'll get the plans into you for, for signatures, once those comments are modified. Thinking M R B is done with all of their, uh, review at this point.
Yeah. Okay, I feel, I think the board feels comfortable that the justification for the extension request is, is fine, but. Myself and I think the rest of the board members are completely, uh, at a loss for this condition fourteen removal. First time we heard of it.
Yeah, they.
Um, so I, I, I'm not sure what you're looking for, for us, it probably wouldn't happen tonight. But, uh, if, if there's some sort of approval, Chris, uh, well.
Yeah.
What's happening?
So I was gonna, uh. I actually realized until just now that. You were coming, I guess, tonight, could you back in two weeks?
Yeah, we can come back in two weeks.
Because it's not on the agenda, I don't think you're allowed to pass this resolution, because good that Lance put it on there. Uh, what we spoke about right before the meeting was. Uh, saying the entire roadway will be built within twenty-four months of completion of phase two.
Yeah, if you want to do it upon dedication of phase two, then that's a great plot, if you want to.
That makes sense, um, and with Lance can prepare that for your consideration and maybe buy like Murphy and Jen Fletcher. Just make sure they were thinking that gets us a trigger on the surety that they'll have to post for that road. Uh. It'll make sense. But it should appear on an agenda if we're amending.
There's no changes at all to our plan, our plan was always submitted, um, with regards to the three phases. Uh, uh, and it's just in working with town staff. We were looking through, going through all of our notes, and that's what we saw in particular conflict, it was just. Conflict between, uh, condition number basically eleven, which provides for full surety. When we construct phase two A, we have to provide the letter of credit. Um, to the town for the entire construction all the way out, so that the town is always guaranteed that that connection will be managed. Um, so. So that is already covered in our approvals in condition number eleven, it basically says the two A surety. Must include complete instruction. Um, so that moves the control of that, uh, construction into the town's hands to guarantee that connection. And so, uh, we're basically just removing the conflict with condition fourteen. Um, which would force a double base construction right now, the way condition fourteen reads. As it says, you have to construct. Uh, like the whole phase, you're going to open up sixty-one logs and, and nobody at the town. Uh, or ourselves, uh, would ever want to, to create an environmental impact. Where you're doing double base construction simultaneously.
So the thinking is, is why you require sureties, but somewhere there's going to be public roads. The thinking was that building code, in some interpretations said, you have to have two outlets. When there's thirty, more than thirty houses on a single road. So the plan is here and it's, it's open to interpretation, different code enforcement officers. Read that to be, have that in your plan and do it, but concern. Uh, why you won't, for in all surety situations is. Scott and Jeff, so you know, it's pretty pulled up here, we're moving to Florida. We built, we built phase two, we made our money. Screw around here, and then you've got a dead-end road, so it's gotten Jeff to have to put up. A surety that town can cash in, that covers the costs of the town putting the rest of that road in. So we're guaranteed that that road will. Have. So that's the thinking, it's good to, we're always assigning sureties, letters of credit, that's what it's for, it's to make sure the town has a mechanism. To do what the developers supposed to do if the developer doesn't find a, that's not obviously. Uh, uh, I think we all believe they're going to do it, but, you know.
Just, there, I said, there's no way tied to the surety that we're looking to release from tonight.
This is for. Two A, two A, two B, were approved by this board with that specific condition and a number of those conditions. Because at that time, you had a code enforcement officer that had a different interpretation than their current. So for our current position, we also have a letter from the fire department stating that we didn't have issue with this before change.
I got a question though, just dawned on me. Do you need to revise your plan to put like a hammerhead?
It's already, it's already on there.
It was already incorporated.
Why, because you were gonna, why did you need a hammerhead, you were gonna complete the road?
Well, we, that was, that's the issue, it was, our, our plan was, was actually approved in phasing right from the beginning. It was only this condition that caused the confusion, so we always submitted with phasing as proper protocol. Would be for environmental concerns, stormwater management concerns. You always phase a project, you never open up, uh, seventeen acres of, of construction and. Impacts simultaneously, so we always had that in, and then what happened was condition fourteen. Through confusion got put into the process and, and now we're hopefully. Um, going to proper construction technique, uh. So, so that, that was what was nice, was there's no need to, there's no change on the plans, everything is in. Um, by code, by fire code, um, condition number eleven. Automatically provides for a surety to the town that we must host. For both two A and two B when we construct two A, so in order for us to move forward with two A. We are posting a bond and a surety for two A and B. And then if we construct two A, and then we'll be back before you, um, to construct the final, uh, two B. Uh, and we're fine with that condition, and we're fine with the twenty-four month timeframe as the maximum outset. Um, from the moment, the reason why I said from the moment we dedicate to A, because your code has changed to. Dedication of those roads immediately upon completion before we can start construction. So that would start our twenty-four month clock, um, from that point. Where you could either immediately pull our surety, um, or, or we would have already constructed that. It's, it's plenty of time for us on, on construction, as I mentioned, we're, we're already out of product on the first phase. Um, and it's, it's just really proper phasing when you go to construct so that environmentally. We don't create a shotgun of a site and have a home constructed. Uh, at one end and a home constructed in the middle, and we have erosion control issues, um, all through. Uh, from an environmental perspective, that would be really, uh, really poor practices. So we, we reached out to town staff, we, we met with, uh, Mike, we met with Lance, uh, and we met, made sure. We talked to, uh, the fire chief at, at Cheshire, uh, had them review the site as well, and all those letters are in. As additional documentation, so because everything was set in our plans already. Um, no need to change or modify any of our approvals, uh, or any of the engineering plans. They're all still waiting signature, it's literally just providing the extension tonight. And then, uh, it all boiled down to condition number fourteen, which, which can be struck from the approval process. And, uh, and that's it, so maybe this evening, just the ninety-day extension, since that's what we're on the agenda for, and then we can be back before you. In two weeks, uh, with, uh, a chance for you to look at the resolution and make sure you're comfortable.
Uh, just to put clarity, section two B does have final approvals, so we have anything that would come back would be. A redated, let me put a signature part of the filing at that. But that was part of the approvals, two sections.
Yeah, I suspect we'll see them, they'll come back for some of them in maybe. Now in twenty-four months from the end of phase two.
So the infamous condition fourteen. Oh, was that the, the original approval or was it in here originally and taken out? Or is it in the preliminary? I, I mean, this fourteen is not related to. And this, this, this one is, uh. Oh, excuse me, oh.
Yeah, it was, it was in the original. It was, it was added at the last moment of our original approval.
Right when we were doing the site design. So we had to deal with dedication, number of units, uh, procedural stuff and the road.
Spent a lot of.
Yeah, I didn't.
Yeah.
Make sure clarity.
There was a lot of, uh.
Okay.
If you think about it, you, by, by doing that, you'd eliminate phasing throughout your, your community, wouldn't really just apply to us, you'd be. It would be a phasing impact for, for the town and from an environmental perspective.
A lot of towns are looking into that at this point, yeah. Um, with the, you know, code enforcement experience, that's good staff, we said that we don't need to do that.
Yeah.
Let's see, twenty-fourth of March, give you enough time to make peace with the county? That's what this. This extension would be.
He, he was actually looking at it this weekend, because we got a email from.
This weekend?
Yes.
Are you staying it over?
We're, we're trying, we want, we said, we wanna, we wanna go right away, so we're.
Okay, I just want to make sure that gave you enough time.
That'd be great.
Uh, we just need the letter from him, uh, state E O H that already accepted the letter, and then D C. D C won't issue their letter until. The county's letters issued, so we're just waiting on that piece.
So, okay, this, for us, pretty quick. Is the board comfortable with considering the extension, but. Uh, to readdress the, uh, request for the, for the condition at, at our next meeting?
Yes.
I gotta read through all this.
Is the board further okay if the foreheads don't come toward you while I'm here to discuss the condition?
As long as someone can explain any questions the board may have regarding their request.
Yeah, I got it. Yeah, let us know. So your handful, please.
Not really, that would be my only question, really. Reading the fire code and interpreted by the fire chief directly?
Well, I was gonna say, let's have that, those three emails in front of the board.
Yeah, anything from our resident board member out on the. First extension on this March three? All right, uh I'll take a motion on Grammy, the firstly, the extension. Subject to the conditions eleven and fourteen to be reviewed at our next meeting. They're in there now, so they give you a view.
Everybody, alright, seeing everybody.
Okay, uh let's move on, what, what, while we're talking extensions. For the board certification, Edmire over on Parkside, they had to withdraw their application. Uh remember we were playing with first, uh second, third extensions with them, so um. Funding didn't work out, it was a funding issue, I guess, and so they would have to.
I think they were too polite. These guys were too polite, I think Edmire was too polite. They sent people the money with them. And uh Baldwin, which is Marco, they're like, the guys doing this. From Albany to Buffalo.
Yeah, they're, they. I have seen a number, the governor's office sends all their emails of the projects that are proving and there have been a number of approvals.
So they're around here.
In New York State.
Yeah, I think, and I'm not swearing, but I think it all went downstream. And they're being too polite because if they complain about it, they'll get it. So these are the guys who know how to fill, to get the money and they didn't get it.
Maybe they can tell us what the affordable housing numbers.
Yeah, that's true, that's true.
Yeah, we have, had that discussion at least twice a year as, as to what the, what, what is the number?
It's. Sixty percent of the median.
Yeah, we've done that, but that comes out, that comes out still pretty high.
At like eighty K, it was still like seven or eighty, yeah.
No, oh, no, it's not what this income is, it's of what they can afford for rent. So I saw it in Monro County and I think it's the same here. It's like for two bedrooms, like eight hundred.
Right, but that translates into an eighty thousand dollar building. That's what we were trying to determine at one point, is what is the strike point that a property needs to sell or rent for? That allows for that and that's because we keep having, uh we might get a manufactured home.
Yeah.
Project that comes in and they're charged, they wanna charge fourteen hundred a month or something like that.
Yeah.
Uh and I disagree with that and that's where we, the numbers are pretty, pretty high, actually.
So the whole point with the affordable grants or tax credits, excuse me, is that.
Yeah.
You don't need to make your money on rent, you get it paid upfront in tax.
Either way.
But yes, is the answer. Rag and Paul would come in, you got, are you, they would be happy to tell you that. So would the guys from Edmire. They actually have consultants on.
Well, another thing you're, you're probably in the near future is the county has done a housing survey. And they uh, they were at the ordinance committee meeting yesterday and they gave us some of the data that they have found. And. On Casey's. Well, they were considering going to each community in Ontario County and making a presentation as to what they've found. And uh so they'll be coming to candidate with something, some history metrics uh they presented.
Is this about the size, minimum square footage?
Yes, we, 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 we were discussing the minimum square footage of a dwelling unit. And we were asking them how, what they felt or what they found in terms of throughout the county and it just. Sort of expanded into talking about a lot of things in terms of uh. Type of housing is needed, they've done a lot of research on the employment versus. The uh, you know, the type of employment, the type of, type of employees needed in the county versus what they can afford to. As far as housing to live here and it's a, it's a big spread. I mean, what, what the housing prices are in Ontario County and what the need is in terms of the employers. Uh to, 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 to work in their establishments. Uh it's a big difference as to what they can afford and what, what's available.
The uh, we suggested having a, a presentation in the board's content.
Mm-hmm, yeah, that's at some point, I, I think it'd probably be this spring, I think, I've got the impression. They're ready to roll it out. Alrighty, let's move on to the minutes from last year, summer twelfth. Any uh further additions, corrections to the last draft?
I'll move to accept the minutes as a number twelve, twenty twenty three.
Okay, we heard you Scott loud and clear, thank you. Do I have a second?
A second.
Okay, for the discussion, if not, all in favor? Okay, we have a uh. Sure you release. No, the morale sure slipped around, taking the check. Okay, this is for uh phase one. Have you looked at it?
Mostly Mark. This one's a hard one to look at. Uh and I was having some dialogue, Lance on it.
Yes, I have.
Talking real money, I can only, I can only trust the, I can't verify that any of it was done, but I can trust that the. People that need to say that it was have said that it is.
Mark had some good questions. Uh honestly, it's, there's a couple of things going on. One, when we get to the back end. And what I mean by that is the, the last pieces of a letter credit being released to the applicant. A lot of the times, it's not the items anymore, it's including outside. It's including the others and others, because it really broken up very well, specifically in the morals. So when you go through it as Mark did and you see the items that are completed, it does not add up to the dollar amount that they're asking for. What we use to track that is the campaign list spreadsheet on the front that documents the releases today. To really in the balance remaining and the retainage value. And so what we have been released to the applicant as part of this. Items that have been completed and then we document what has not been completed and the retained value that we're gonna keep for that value. Most of them, I say that most, we get in a very thorough spreadsheet. That's not necessarily required, it's definitely something to try to obtain. But everybody does it differently and so it, it makes it difficult at this point, Mark, and I, I can appreciate the questions. Honestly, I was going through and I was starting to second guess myself through the process uh when I was getting questions and. I wanted to make sure that I understood and so at the end of the day, what is being requested right now is portion, proportion of what has been. In fact, installed and completed and confirmed by town staff, that's reflected in the asterisk, the other dollar amount is the retention. That we, we already caused dedication of water, storm and roadways. Now we have a maintenance plan covering those diamonds, so that's why we're releasing the retained. Does do a very good job of itemizing it for anybody that follows.
Is that a motion now?
Yeah, I'll, I'll make the motion that uh for the charity release for C P N twenty one debt two ninety one, the amount of. One hundred thirty four thousand, one hundred fifty dollars, ninety three cents.
The motion is second to get the rentals, some money back, so it wasn't a fleet loss. Uh all in favor? Okay. Still got the rules and procedure to go over, but let's see, uh some other housekeeping uh. The town board. Two thousand twenty four are going to have two meetings a month. And the first meeting of the month will be to uh sort of like a workshop where they'll have the. Committees, boards come in and uh sort of have a face to face, uh so. The planning board, I think our first sit down with them is, is March, March eleventh, I believe. So uh not totally sure what the agenda is, but I'm sure between now and then we'll. Hear what they're looking for us to discuss. So that's uh something to keep on the radar. I think it's March and August are, are two months. It'll be for the board, so that's something new for twenty twenty four. Kim's still looking for uh newsletter articles, uh if you wanna write something up on your, your project. I know Bob, I think is going to work on something uh when he gets back. Uh Bob did put together a, related to solar, a checklist. So as you rec, as you know, certainly know, the solar law has a lot of parameters and requirements uh in the, in the verbiage. Is essentially taking those and put them in a checklist form so that you can check as to what the setbacks should be, what the percentage of. Uh impervious should be, what the uh landscaping requirements should be, the size of the fence. So it's all in a checklist format and uh it makes a lot easier to reveal a plan, so. Uh that's something that I know was submitted to staff and to Lance and I assume it's something that uh will be available to all us. For our next solar. Speaking of Bob, uh and projects, um. I know we had the projects that we all decided to work on. Some of them, uh Scott, I know with the five G. I don't say it became stale, but it's something that's sort of just in limbo. If there's something else that you'd be interested in looking at. Or researching, um certainly you and anybody else would like to change uh. Change canoes in the middle of the stream. Uh so think about it, but Bob has, uh I asked Bob as the vice chairman and he's agreed to be like a projects coordinator. And he would sort of uh uh keep track of the projects, uh saves me having to do that when I'm trying to. And put the agenda together and uh a lot of other items are involved, so uh I thank Bob for stepping up and taking that position. There's. Uh training, we've got four base code training, guys uh. On the seventeenth here in this room. So uh certainly make a point to either be here or zoom in on us. Uh there are a couple, uh we're, we're now back into our. Four hours of uh training requirements for the new year, so you've got the winter education series. Coming up uh January tenth, that'd be tomorrow, and the seventeenth. Uh I see an advertisement for municipal boot camps. And uh they're gonna start that again and have a session every month and there's some good sessions. I think I set that out today from Hancock, so uh. Watch on to one of those, if you get an opportunity, check on the training on the seventeenth.
Uh if they do ask, I brought this up last. If they, if they do ask, if anybody minds that it be recorded, please say, let them record it. Don't object to recording videos.
We'll consider your request, thank you.
Uh Kim, do you want to check with Sarah to see if uh it can be recorded? I'm sure that she thought about it, maybe Sarah's already thought about it.
Well, they're a little bit sensitive to the recording sometimes because the way it goes on. Just sometimes takes what could be months to.
Show up there.
It's faster now.
Yeah, I was, I was getting tired of looking at the April planning board.
It's, they're up there now? Or they're, they're coming on?
As, as we're doing them there.
Okay.
History as well?
Okay, let's uh delve into the rules of the street procedure.
For that, just because it's night. Rules of procedure role until we change.
Yes, yes. I mean, you can make his argument the easy way, but yeah. Um they're adopted.
I just wanna make sure that we just had a meeting and it doesn't create a problem for anything that we did in that meeting.
No, it doesn't make, there's zero problem. There's no, there's no point, do you say?
We don't ever say that they expired anytime.
They're not, they're the twenty twenty three planning board rules of procedure, but they're not the. Rules of procedure for twenty twenty three, that makes sense, but. And quite frankly, I don't think you're going to adopt new rules tonight. Because I think changes are gonna be, to be made and.
Uh could be, yeah, it looks like uh.
You know.
Know some suggestions during the year and I've got some from Bob and uh. We can go over them now and then uh, you know. Reconsider when the future be. I think the only obligation we have is to consider. The rules as, as part of our, just part of our rules, where we have to consider the rules of procedure at the reorganization.
And you can adopt, you believe that that's the case, you can change these every month. It's not a great idea, but you don't think that you're stuck with them for a year. You know, we've done awards that don't even have.
Well, we did change it back in September for the short term. So it was a case where they were invented mid-year.
Yeah, um I looked through, I, if it were me, I would take a bunch of stuff out like. Checklist buffs, just on the key to have. Okay, examples in your goals, but.
And I, I'm reading Bob's and I don't wanna like paint ourselves into a corner by saying. Things like limiting the presentation from the applicant being in person only or outlining the number of hours. For the training requirements. I don't want to create redundancies where other things are documented somewhere else. And you know, we have, we abide by some other rules or guidances or regulations when they're somewhere else. I don't wanna create that. Here because then if it changes, then we have to change this as well. The one thing that Bob noted that. I think I wanted to, to discuss and open up is the. Paragraph ten E about the. Approval of the minutes and whether you need to attend the meeting to approve the minutes because I think we've gone back and forth on that a couple of times, but.
So the answer to the question and. Under New York state law, the answer is no, you do not have to be at the meeting. You're, you're entitled to say, hey, I wasn't at the meeting. I'm not comfortable voting.
Right.
But in a situation where only. Three people showed up at that meeting and. But. Uh, you know, one of them's not at the next meeting, you gotta approve them. Actually, just to be clear, you don't, there's no requirement to approve minutes.
There's, there's no timeframe that we have to, but it's good practice.
Well, minutes have to be produced in five days. You can't approve them in five days because you don't have a meeting. There's no law in New York state that says planning boards have to approve meeting. It's good policy, it's good practice.
Yes.
But there's nothing, meeting minutes aren't. They're, they're approved to say, yeah, this is, we're all comfortable with these. It's not a transcript of what happened. It's not. Uh, you know, it needs to be a, a record. The only thing that needs to be included in meeting minutes in New York state bars. Uh, a record of all votes, who made the motion, who seconded the motion and who voted A, I or N.
Yep.
That's the only thing that has to be in meeting minutes. So if I'm on a planning board and two people sitting next to me who I've been on a planning with board with for multiple years. Say, yeah, this is what happened there. I'll vote for approval. That's good enough for me. They're not gonna say, yeah, yeah, this is what happened. You know, that's the way I look at it. The way your rules of procedure, I think I've been giving you bad advice. The rules of procedure prohibit that. I would say take it out unless.
If we want to align with state or make that as a specific requirement for us.
This is a requirement outside of the law.
Right.
You know, not required, but.
I, I agree with you, Chris. In my, my. My thought is to take it out. So that. We have that flexibility for members that don't attend the meeting, they're still eligible to. Approve minutes, even if they're, they weren't present.
Well, then a lot of the churning over the minutes occurs per to the meeting anyway. So it's. It's more a procedural thing at the meeting. Well, and if there's any changes to be made, it's usually given to Karine.
Right.
Yeah, if two of you were at the meeting and one of you wasn't and nobody else is here. And the two of you were at the meeting or say, no, I remember this. Yeah. Well, they don't vote on it. You can't. You know, you're, you're reasonable people. I'm comfortable with. With the, that we're not gonna need everybody to upset it.
All my times during the board, I don't remember anybody objecting to what's in the minutes. I can, I can, I can remember additions, corrections.
Right.
Yeah. At a meeting, but I do not recall anybody voting against.
Yes, sir.
So you, you, you kind of. Played out the framework of what is required by law to be in the minutes. Why are we putting more, more than that in minutes?
So every year, so I've been to the planning board, I turned fifteen questions every year from first. I don't know how many. Six or seven. Hey, guys, you just need to. Uh, and every year I was told by, I haven't brought it up, Chuck, you, you told me this, you've been in the part of this discussion. The boards have consistently wanted the detail. About what was discussed, about what the applicant said, about what board member so and so said. Um, and I've always been told by the planning board that. It's helpful to go back and reference, especially. But like Piercebrook that was here, Creekfield that was here. These people got their approvals four years ago. And like Lakewood Meadows, they got their approvals twenty years ago. Or more actually. Um, so it's, it can be useful to have that level of detail. You don't see that level of detail necessarily in a town board. Meeting minutes or town board does zoning board, you don't put that level of detail in, do you?
No, not usually. I think we have it at the beginning. It's in the form I was given that they're not verbatim, minutes aren't verbatim.
Yeah.
Meaning we're not writing down every single thing.
Yeah.
Cause they'd be a lot longer than they are.
So Bob, in your opinion, is it more of an asset or a liability?
There's zero liability.
I, I, I rely on a little detail. Well, I'm spoiled because the previous secretary. It was almost like a transcription. I mean, that was John, John did a nice job and maybe it was too much. Tom, or Tim, I don't know if you've ever read the minutes from. Previously, I mean, it was, it was almost verbatim. You could, you could.
He's done that for a lot of years. I met with him a little bit before I started doing this. He was telling me all the experiences.
And I, I don't think we need that detail. I think the detail that Kareem's giving us is enough as long as it's accurate and. Our job is to just make sure that it's, we review it, that it's accurate and not that it has to be verbatim.
Yeah, and you know, there can be quotes and it's up to the secretary who's taking the minutes, quite frankly, it came up. Uh, you know. You know, Park takes meeting minutes at the town board. That's an elected official who isn't subject to the. Winds or desires of the down board. Uh, right, whatever she wants in the minute, so long as it.
I just wanted to ask the question because my experience with attorneys, they've always told me less is more.
It's true. You know, it's, you're absolutely right. I'm very comfortable with this board's conduct and what's said and what could go in those meeting minutes. Um, occasionally, I don't read them unless you guys really want me to. I don't want that. Occasionally, when I do, I say, oh, man, can't believe I said it like that. But, you know, unless you're inaccurately quoted. Uh, the one thing I would say is when you're revising meeting minutes, don't say, oh, and put that I said such and such. Uh, I don't want that. The board secretary shouldn't be taking direction. And. Buddies, the, the issue of the secretary record what they want. You can say this is nothing, but don't give yourself.
All the time, just a clarification.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, if it's.
And I. So I think this is something. Procedure regarding approving. Did I hear you correctly? Basically, if, if your headline, you need to put. More detail in how we approve.
And you've got just the right amount of detail.
Yep, I think so too. So getting back to the issue of whether a board member can approve the minutes if they were not in. Tendence, your state losses. You don't have to be here to approve them.
Quite frankly, there, no, that's, sorry, that's not true. Your state law doesn't have a position.
Oh.
You know, your state law doesn't say you have to approve the minutes at all.
So approval of the minutes is not founded in law.
Yeah, it's founded more in, rather, good, good, more in practice. Because otherwise you could have a secretary want run. It's making sure you're looking at them and agree that those are, that they accurately reflect like that.
So it's our decision whether we want a person that has been present or not, excuse me, not present to vote.
But you do remember Gene Christman brought to our attention that we had to make sure that once the minutes were posted. They couldn't be changed unless they were changed at a public view. So that's why we've done the draft review before posting. Then we put our five cents in and then Kareem does a second draft. If anything's added. That's the one that's posted. That's the one we. Think tonight, subject to any additional corrections.
Right.
Okay, so that's the only law per se, and I guess it's more county law is the posting of the minutes and.
No, that's state law. You gotta get those things up there.
Okay. Yeah, not content.
It sounds like the only thing that we need to do is modify it for the people being present.
Yeah.
Well, take it out.
Take it out.
Take it out.
And just.
I'm fine with taking it out.
Especially if we're at a deadline to get it posted. And if a board member doesn't feel comfortable in voting because they weren't here, that's, that's their problem. You say, hey, I wasn't here. Okay. I don't want to spend, you know, I don't want to go over wordsmithing this thing. If we, I particularly, what we could do, if we could get a. Amenable. Amenable document. Sent out to the board members. We can all put our input in.
Do you want me to make these changes and track changes and then you guys can all comment?
Uh, let's, we're not gonna, we're not gonna, we're gonna talk general tonight and then we'll talk, if there's specifics in terms of. You know, adding order or taking out a word or something like that, uh, we can do that in the. Digital copy. I guess the one concern Bob had, and I, I guess it's something we have to think about. Is making sure that these procedures conform to our current application process using cloud permit.
Do you have two in case cloud permit goes to?
Well, what I'm gonna look at it. I wanted, I, I think Lance. Sarah and I should say, what is the process? Let's make sure this covers that process and whatever other process may or may not exist.
And maybe there's a separate, this is how you cloud permit.
Yeah. I don't think he was intending to let cloud permit be integrated into our notes.
Oh, no, no.
So for example, um, the timing for which. Section seven A talks about, right? Our agendas and everything needs to get posted. All of that stuff needs to happen. Does cloud permit do it within, are there any conflicts between what cloud permit does and what you put in there? I think that's what he's. Not to put all of it in here.
Okay.
And the same would be, you know, the county planning board minutes. Uh, just make sure they're put into cloud permit so we have access to them.
Related to seven A.
Yep.
We don't enforce this at all, but it's super annoying. I look at, I do everything the weekend before one last time before I come to this meeting. Typically, if it gets past Sunday afternoon, I may or may not get it before I show up. And something shows up Monday or Tuesday or after I get it, I get super irritated from that. I know I, I know I can make a decision to just say I'm not going to give an opinion on it, but it happens.
Wait. What the heck? We've been really clear that we don't accept stuff. What are we doing accepting stuff? Who's doing it? Is it you? Oh, because they're uploading stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah, they can upload.
And then we'll talk about it in.
And then.
We, we have been accepted.
Without even looking at it.
We get supportive then.
Oh, is it, is it possible for staff to flag?
Wait, is it a date? You can see the date.
No, and flag them and say, hey. I mean, if it's, it's my thought, if it's the ship oh, no impact or no effect letter. It has one sentence in the middle of the page. If you're being a stickler about that, you're being a jerk.
I think we're really talking.
If they update a revised site plan.
Has happened.
Staff should, staff should say, hey. Do you want the board to vote tonight on?
Which one are we?
On Friday's site plan or Monday's site plan? Cause if you want them to vote on, you want them to consider Monday's site plan. You're on next, next month's agenda. Right? Isn't that what you guys have over, have said repeatedly?
We've said it, yeah.
We say it.
Then why aren't we doing it? Why aren't?
Again, applicants I think are uploading revised plans.
Well, you have to, I mean, so from that side of the table. You know, they're getting comments and they're trying to do what they feel they need to do to address those comments, to show good faith. Moving forward, but I mean, they, 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 in their, I believe in their mind that they feel that it's something that they should be doing. And so they do it.
Yeah.
You know, as opposed to coming in and saying, well, you have comments for the last month, you haven't addressed them yet. I'll come have an address.
Right.
I think that's what they're intending to do. I don't, I guess I, I struggle with, why do we have to look at? I don't know why we have to. We have a process that keeps every plan that you submit. You're just at the board meeting. If they say, go to our latest one, we say, nope, we go to the one that we're all familiar with and that's the one.
That's hard. That's not fair for the board. That's not fair to Chuck.
You're saying the board has made a deciding which one to look at.
All the time, stuff comes in the Tuesday prior to me, between those two.
Yeah.
That happens all the time. The week. Alright.
Yeah, no.
Is it possible for you to? Close that, the agenda? Well, so I want to see if we can close it. I want to see if we can post a notice. But this is pretty, pretty high.
Notice when I send out the agenda, I tell them they have. They can't send that stuff after seven days.
They're.
Otherwise.
They don't read that. I've gotten those and you, there's a bunch of information. The good ones do and the bad ones don't. Is there a way to post it on the posting to the submission page or could you go through?
We can go through. I mean, it's, it's hard to track. We get no obligation, but it's like we get, I mean, people are uploading sometimes fifteen, sixteen.
I, I'm not asking for staff to do anything different. Quite honestly, I'm asking for us to decide if we're going to.
Us to do something.
Are we gonna, are we gonna accept the, do we need to change seven A and get rid of the two weeks or the week, the Tuesday prior? Or are we gonna? Well, none of us want to slow progress.
When everything was hard copy. And the other thing is, we used to get the plans and correspondence delivered to our house. So it had to be in by Tuesday.
Right.
They could get it out because we got that correspondence, so that, that shipment, that's twenty five dollar postage.
Yeah, so it was a big deal when you guys agreed to come, hey, stop mailing this to me, I'll come pick it up.
Oh, no, we went digital. We said, you don't put it, you know, this was before cloud permit, but after hard copies. So, yeah, we had to have it by Tuesday because Wednesday was being mailed. And now, I mean, it's a rolling. No.
Since we're gonna be looking at things for consideration, think about seven A as to whether or not.
Oh, yeah, no, that's, that's one of the things I circled that. Uh, I'm not sure we're gonna solve it tonight, but I want people to succeed.
And just to, is there a reason we get further to the floor five minutes and everybody else gets three? This question.
Yeah, then I thought, well, further to the floor could be something unrelated to the application, an application.
I don't care. I just didn't know. Um, ten D. I don't know, I don't know if we've been doing this. If we go against county planning, we're supposed to have.
Yeah, we do that.
That we do.
Yep.
But do we send them the reasons for doing so?
Doesn't say, it says you'll set forth in the public rec, record its reasons for doing so.
I don't, I don't think we've been doing that. Do we need to do it?
You very rarely do it.
I know. That's not true. Well, we get, we get a variance request that the county says you shouldn't do it because they represent it. It's a variance. We don't do variance.
I'm sorry, but those ones, I don't think you're required to. Give reasons. They're not gonna give reasons. You're not gonna give reasons. That being said. This board gives reasons and its findings and lands prepares and in the meeting minutes. It's so any of your, your statements during the meeting are setting forth the reasons in public record.
If everybody's comfortable that we're doing that and exhibit A. Free. I'm sorry. Exhibit eight point five. The tree and vegetation. We give them six months to fix that, but we really give them a year. Right?
What's?
It states, if required by the planning board, all removed trees or vegetation must be replaced within six months following site plan. They have a year, correct? Just wondering why we have a deviation.
Oh, because this is for, this is just. In the, in the, so the planning board in nineteen ninety five. imposed the condition that nobody in Fox Ridge could cut trees down in a certain section of it. And, oh, you're, you're familiar with this section.
We, we, we have had one discussion on it in my time here that they had to do it. I'm just wondering why it was. Because if it were a normal site plan of any time. And we said that they do something, they have a year to do it. This just seemed inconsistent with.
Well, it is specific to Fox Ridge. And we are the step parents of Fox Ridge. And we are the step parents of Fox Ridge. Conservationists. Somehow, nobody wanted it, so we took it.
Well, it's a general statement related to all these restricted areas. We don't want to, it just seems.
It has to do with time of year, can't put they want to plant trees in the winter.
No, no, that's just for guys.
And then my last comment, actually, other than the stuff Bob brought up was on the virtual meetings, virtual attendance, I should say. It's, uh, it's always odd to me that we're required to say where we are. I don't know why it matters.
And I don't, so, that's the weirdest thing. So Bob's comment about this might go away is true. Like, I'm hopeful that they'll reinvent it in some way and it'll coincide enough with our existing policy that we can just keep that. The state where you are uh, rule is straight out of open meetings law, isn't it? Uh, video recordings. So state law changed, you were, it used to be that you were required to also allow the public to participate from that location. So if you were on vacation in Florida, you probably wouldn't participate from your hotel room, you'd go down to the lobby.
I see.
Uh, and for the ones, board members, well, screw it, I'm at my sister-in-law's house, I'm not, then I'd invite people there. Now that's not the rule, but you do have to say where you are. I forget if it's a specific address.
And you have to have a denification record.
Um.
We got all that.
Well, that's easy, and you know, the other thing at the, the government, the law that may sunset says upon request, municipality, if you're doing video, we have to provide a full transcript of any meeting that's video recorded, which would ordinarily cost seven, eight thousand dollars to get a meeting, a three hour meeting transcript. Zoom just automatically transcribes it, so. Uh, word file.
You can turn on your captions.
Yeah.
Yeah, to turn it on.
Please, 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 please. Uh, maybe less.
It's sometimes. I say we don't play with that and we see what happens in July.
I, that's my suggestion.
It might have to be changed.
Uh, if it changes, if the law changes or if the law sunset, I'll look at it again. I'm pretty sure you can still.
I, I, I think we want to, I am all about being present and in physical, because there are so many things that we, we would lose so much if you don't allow that.
Well, yeah, this is amazing. And it, and it works. It used to be kind of a pain in the neck and it was more intrusive than it was. This is amazing. I was able to participate in the whole meeting.
It is.
Um, cause he didn't wanna drive in the windstorm and he decided to sit at home where it's about.
From Florida. From Florida. It's a little right.
Tornadoes.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, lovely.
Again, it's my comments, a lot of it's a little, little something here, a little something there. I, I, I'll put it into the digital. It circulated for consideration, but I don't think.
The words actually.
Okay.
As, as, as we're making edits to the shared document, we need to make that a public meeting since.
You don't, don't send it to each other.
No.
Send it to Kristen, please.
Something Kristen.
Send it to Kristen.
What?
That way, I think I'll probably.
So that is a real question. If we were, are we, if we were to work on a document.
Yeah, that's a public thing.
That's a public meeting.
I would think so. I think it would. I don't think that.
Somebody's challenging.
So you do. Um, on meetings. You reply all.
No, no, I mean, I mean, so there, we don't reply all to that. We send in our changes to them. And sometimes we reply all to the changes, but we don't ever discuss it.
Yeah.
What I'm asking is, what I'm asking is different. I'm asking, so let's take this document. Easiest thing in the world to do is throw it in the cloud. We all work on it. You can see track changes. We all work on it together. That's for both.
I, I would suggest strongly that you not do. Great technique, great efficiency, it's effective, it's a great way to do it, you can have.
Can't happen. If you restrict, if you restricted that document, only open on this one individual at a time, you gotta, you okay?
But it's, this.
No, because you're getting their communications.
Right, you still see it.
Oh, Mark thinks this about this issue.
Yeah.
Um, now, is there a situation where you probably could, yes.
I think we can.
Um, I mean.
What we could do is sitting here.
Yeah. Um, but don't read, I mean, and I don't think you're either excluding me from them or you're not doing it, which would be great, but reply all to to the, yourselves. Um, you really can't do that. You can for scan, yeah, I'm available that day. Uh, that's fine. But general discussion would be great to be do over text or email, but we can't.
So then we will review the Word doc of the rules procedure separately. Send those out to town folks. And then we'll come back to the next meeting in January with all of the comments that's together and wrap it up.
But, but we can send each other stuff of, can you please consider? And we do that all the time. We just did that with Bob's minutes.
That's what I was gonna say, Bob's minutes, how they, how they, did Bob send them out or did?
You sent it.
I sent it.
If it's not egregious.
I'm thinking, maybe I did.
Sure, so, no, if it's not egregious, you know.
Yeah, it's not a conversation.
That was important information. You could have passed it out in, you could have printed it out, not here. Uh, it's true, but you, you guys don't do it consistently. When it happens, it's genuinely innocuous. I'm not gonna make a nuisance of myself saying you can't do that. Um, but there are, there have been boards where I've had to say, wait a minute, everybody, please stop talking about this.
Make sure when we're reviewing his contract and, and what is doing, let me discuss it that way.
Yes.
Oh, we did that with Bob's comments in the solar.
Yeah.
Remember he had, he sent, but he sent it to the applicant too, which we, we all agreed that that was fine, so that we didn't have to sit here an hour and a half and go through each one of them.
Interestingly, not, there's no statute that answers this question. It's sort of in the eye of the beholder and I think it's the spirit of the open meetings law. Uh, we're not allowed to engage in deliberations, we're not allowed to discuss. We're allowed to distribute? Yes, I think you are.
Distribute, but not discuss.
Um, what happened, you said, hey, everybody, here's this thing, and I think somebody emailed, replied, thanks. Or I'll take a look, that's great. You didn't say, well, I'm not throwing because of this, and then another person said, oh, I agree with Bob.
Gets into a dispute.
Yeah.
Bob's an idiot.
So we all share our opinions on a topic. That's basically okay, as long as we don't get into any deliberation related to that topic.
No.
I like blue, I like green, I like yellow.
If you're all do, doing it, it becomes suspiciously deliberative, because I might like red. But when Mark said he likes blue, I said, well, I like blue too, so I'm going to look. You know? There's not a ton of.
Alright, we don't do enough of it, dude.
You know.
I'm sorry.
Taste by taste, baby.
Sorry, I asked.
I mean, oh, I, you want me to keep walking, I'll go on.
So the, the legal way or legitimate way of doing this thing would be sit here tonight and go over each each line, and does anybody wanna change this to, wanna change that?
No, you could, no, so you, I don't get.
Cause I'm trying to with that.
You're allowed to do stuff in writing. Not allowed to conduct deliberations. Oh, via email.
So, okay, so if we, if we get, we get the copy of the rules and we each do our own markup.
Send it to, send it to me.
Send it to staff.
I'll compile it.
So how do I find out prior to the next meeting what Mark's thoughts were on the rules?
Find out after the meeting. Well, I'll send something out. I can communicate with all of you.
You can share, you can share the.
Communicate with all of you. Oh, yeah, sorry, here's, here's, I don't know this, oh, it's that.
Yeah.
So the staffs can communicate.
Yeah.
This has nothing to do with the resolutions.
Um, I'm always afraid that you're gonna respond back to all of them.
They don't, so it's, 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 but I will tell you that.
It is inefficient. Inefficient, ineffective and ridiculous as it is to, it's tiny by prohibiting a really good tool that you could be using. The transparency it allows is worth its weight in gold. Because if you all had this stuff beforehand and you say in your meet, public meeting with twenty people sitting out there, okay, so all the changes we discussed, yeah, okay, great. All along favorite, I, and everyone sitting there says, did you?
What just happened?
I thought we, I thought you weren't allowed to do that.
Right.
What else have you been talking about? Were you talking about taking a bribe? Were you talking about doing this? You know, and then everyone gets suspicious and show up to monitor you.
We call it executive session.
I'll find you. I will always. Very limited situations should this board ever have an executive situation, executive side. You should do it out in the open. It's, there's a reason for the open meetings law and it's worth its weight in gold. Literally, the public trust. And it just means our job is easier. Otherwise, people.
Okay, so we'll get a Word document, we'll mark it up, we'll send it to Kristen and Chris. You will then.
I'll send you a suggestion of dupli- duplications, I'll.
You'll clean it up.
I'll clean it up.
Okay.
You know, if everyone says the same thing, if two people say the same thing, I'll suggest it.
We'll come to the, the next meeting and we'll, can you do that two weeks?
And that will also include your suggestions for things to cover?
Yeah. Yeah, my, my minor suggestion. I would revamp, I would start from scratch, clean this up and, you know, a lot of redundancies.
You need to go two weeks.
But let's just.
It's getting old.
If the, if the win, to make sure that works.
I have three, I'm, there's three ideas.
Oh, yeah, that's right, dude.
There's, you should talk about others and I don't know that that needs to be in here. I don't know that it doesn't need to be in here. I just, I think we, we have corrected some of these at PRC. The question that I have is, does it strengthen staff's ability to do what I'm about to ask up here? See if there was a document that referenced why we're doing it. For example, continuations. We have some tendency, not, not always, cause I feel like the board asks staff always, hey, are we able to do this in two weeks or do we need to go out? But in, in my world, it, it makes a lot more sense to never continue something from today to two weeks out that requires a plan review, because there just isn't time for us to get it, review it, respond to it and get it to you guys prior to the, the two week period of time. So if an application is being continued because there's revisions, my thought is, is do we want, do we need to, should we put something in the rules that say continuations are always to the second meeting of the month and just deal with it as it is. Now, there's certain, there's scenarios that exist where, well, a two week period of time would be sufficient, which is under plan review lines, it's almost impossible to do.
I, I was thinking about this over the weekend, uh, cause every year I say you should empower staff to, to deny stuff. To say, no, we're not putting this on an agenda. And every year, everyone sort of says, yeah, so it should sort of be the chair who has that authority. And then I thought would be um, I'm gonna propose it to you essentially, and when I write up a graph based on all your input is staff has the authority to say, no, this is not going on the agenda because you submitted late, subject to being overridden by the chair. Um, and staff can request chairs in, Chuck, what do you think? Uh, if, and then if an applicant says for you, I want, I want Chuck to weigh in on it, then you'll, you know, make a request to Chuck on every, does that make sense?
Yeah.
That gives the chair that ultimate authority, but without but gives you the flexibility to, gives the chair the flexibility, gives you the authority, does that make sense?
Lance, Lance, I thought you were talking about, like, when we're here, we're talking about an application and there's a site plan that needs, let's say we didn't get a landscape plan on a lake shore. Um, we say we need to continue because you need to get us an updated site plan. You're specifically saying don't make it for the next meeting in two weeks, push it out at least to a month.
One, one reason is, I think it's standardized it, like, we always, if we follow that process every meeting, then it's always going to be the same continuation process for everything.
Yeah.
Doesn't it? Didn't we used to do that?
Continue, we did, we have, we have a lot of things that we tried and now yeah, I, there's, there's, there's scenarios that exist where we don't like, oh, this one shouldn't, I mean, they really have an issue. Why, they gotta be here two weeks from now. It's a simple form, they're gonna submit it tomorrow, call it a day. It's just we sometimes get caught up with that dialogue and the very next guy comes in, he's like, well, I need your, all your shoreline guidelines and I need to give you this. I'll, I'll guarantee I'll give it to you by Thursday.
Yeah.
And then it's the Thursday of the following week and we're trying to run through review and staff's trying to decide, when did they get it in that time?
But that's where we could get by the Tuesday, the Tuesday rule, right?
Yeah.
They really, they don't have two weeks, they have a week. And staff take that, don't take it off, and I think.
Staff doesn't wanna do that, I get the feeling.
I, it's, it's a lot to look at. I mean, I, we had talked previously about reaching out to cloud permit to see if there's a way to move the applications into a status where the users cannot upload any comments, which.
We can move it backwards.
We'd have to move back to submitted.
Yes.
But that would then, if they wanted to upload something, they wouldn't be able to and they'd have to reach out to us.
But what about this? And I'm just, I'm not saying you gotta do this with this word. Friday afternoon, you go through the Tuesday's application, the applications on the Tuesday agenda, and anybody submitted stuff. You send them a message saying you're off the agenda, just cross their names off on the agenda, and that's that.
Right.
Right?
Yeah.
Well, we're talking two different things, right?
You guys are, there's a.
Yeah, the, the concern is the same on both, but one is an actual application. Here tonight, we discussed it. They have to make revisions to the plan because we're not ready, the board's not ready to move forward tonight, something was omitted. We sit here with a blank line on the continuation, I said, hmm, which one do you refer this to? You wanna go two weeks from now? Hey, applicant, can you get it in by Friday? I can get it by Thursday. Okay, engineer, you're gonna get the work done? Yep, I'm gonna get it done. And then Friday comes along and staff's going through the files saying, hey, did we get that information? And that's if they have a chance to even go through it.
They're, 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 they can get the stuff in by that, in two days.
I'm saying, take that part of it out. Just say, you got, you gotta come back two weeks, two weeks from now.
Make it a standard.
And this is the date, it's always this day, you always gotta get it by this day.
Yes.
I think you're making the town the bad guy. When you have the easy.
Oh, are we not dating the application?
When has it ever happened that we've gotten?
You have a rule, but then you have the exception. So, right, if the rule gives everybody a level of comfort and then if the chair is comfortable with evaluating exceptions.
I mean, right, there's, for everyone, there's one that's not, but most of the time the question comes down, hey Lance, can you get a review done on time? And then I have to. Uh, yeah, God.
I'm tired of what you're suggesting, you know, like Tuesday prior and then, but how many times have we come in? And if somebody stands up there and they're like, well, look at the plans that I just uploaded forty five minutes ago.
Yeah.
So then we're talking about us having to check, like, every day.
It doesn't end up decided. I just, that was something that, that continuation process, I think is something to at least have dialogue on, see if it makes sense. It doesn't, they're way to, to come in.
But you, can you write it like a, two sentences about it and send an email?
I will try to do something like that for you and then let you, just.
So I don't forget it.
I'll put my, my thought.
I'm driving home after this, is which way I'll forget your plan?
No, a hundred percent.
Send me an email that you remember my plan.
So I have two more. The other one similar is on the zoning application. I think I brought it up to you guys already. If there's an application received by staff at PRC right now, the thought is, is a lot of times we give them the schedule. We say, okay, you have a zoning application, you're on for the zoning board meeting on the sixteenth. And then if all goes well, because we have a completed application, we'll see you the very next week, Tuesday, at the plan board meeting. Well, then that creates that weird dilemma where some of them require public hearing notices, so we schedule it. They never get the variance, so they all show up. Hey, by the way, you don't need to be here, you know, it's not on the agenda tonight. Likewise, the main concern is just review. So if anything has a ZBA application, my thought is, is they don't go to the next plan board meeting, they go to the next month, first of what I call the first plan board meeting of the month. And if that's always the same, then it's always gonna be filled up with those type of applications.
Aren't we handling a PRC though?
Well, certainly are. Again, I, my thought is, I don't, I'm assuming that's good enough at PRC. I'm assuming that's good enough at PRC, I just didn't know if we need to strengthen that with something, the point backs, just a thought. Um, and the, the last one was the number of applications, again, I think we're, we're handling that now. I just didn't know if you needed to have some other recourse in your rules that says, you know what, the board has the right. At this point in time, for this reason, whatever that may. We don't have that.
Don't worry, no limits, but I mean, you get six sign permits. Yeah, one is automatically be limited, no, I can say it's fine, put them on there.
But if we get two MUOs.
So.
So you'll.
Five, I should be.
Just get the agenda run by you, or set. That's what your chair, your chair's charged.
Run by, yeah, but I, I, I was hearing it differently, I was hearing that we had a requirement that we had to do something within a period of time. I always thought it was a prerogative of the chair to adjust the agenda. Cause we talked about it all the time, we get a lot of stuff going on that night, we don't wanna do it then, or we.
So, previously, at PRC, all the applications come in, they were deemed complete.
And they just dumped on?
We tried to go, you know, in order and, and put them on the first agenda we could get them on, because. You know, procedurally, they're already forty days out, right, by the time they submitted an application, so we're getting them on the first logical meeting that it makes sense. The problem is, is that for a period of time, we had like potentially fifteen applications on a number of meetings. And then when ZBA got continued, it just, it overloads. So, I, right now, we're kinda self-correcting it at PRC, cause we're pushing them out. But I didn't know if you need to have a rule that at least gave the board the ability to say, you know what? It's midnight tonight, we just didn't get through everything, I don't know.
And at the discretion of the board.
At the discretion of the board, when the time arrives, whatever that case is.
discharge the meetings and continue.
And, and I think you might already have that, I don't know that you don't, I just don't know that you don't sometimes, I've just.
Nothing prevents any of us from leaving. Wait a minute, that's why I moved back. You're not going.
I know it's where I'm close.
I said if the lights went out, I was just walking.
So it's just, just.
Well, you suggested a paragraph, a paragraph, that's, uh, related to.
I did that one time, just because I was.
Cause that October issue.
I don't necessarily believe that's the language that you guys need, I just.
Okay.
At that one particular moment, I was concerned that we had fifteen applications and we weren't gonna get them all, so I thought. Doing your question meeting before would allow you guys to do it, but.
Two, two meetings a month is pretty generous compared to most towns, right?
I think you guys are pretty efficient, you get a lot of applications, a lot of complicated ones and see everything. Pretty much everything's required to come to you.
It's, everything is required to come to you and you've got a lot, you're very, very thorough. And you're very thorough with your referrals and the code is very thorough. So I think it's, if you had one, people would never get through the process.
And staff make it pretty easy for us, I mean, there's. There's a lot of stuff that when I'm looking at projects, I was like, oh, I never knew about that, because it meets whatever conditions was already in place, so I'm thankful for that.
So those are the three that were something that we had brought up, again, not saying they need to be added in, I just.
Yeah, the other thing was stopping the meeting, I, I, I feel so sorry for somebody that sat through a whole meeting and then we turn around and say, well, that's it, fuck, fuck struggle.
I would feel sorry too. There's a scenario that is so.
Everyone, they're like, please, just like.
If it's eight o'clock and you know you've got another two hours.
What might be better is limiting the project, right? We've got.
That's what I'm saying, it's a sign permit, you got fifteen minutes, it's, it's a, it's a single family residential, you've got thirty minutes, it's.
It's a new commercial project, we need to allocate an hour.
This town is too, there's too many peaks and valleys. Some, some sign permits, yeah, you know, maybe an hour.
I, I think.
Like a max.
I, I, I. Your C C, I don't have to be honest with you right now.
I, I think so, I don't think we have to say anything.
I think we're kinda self-correcting.
Um, so if you want, now that I think we've sort of talked about this, if you just wanna send an email to me and Kristen saying. You know, obviously glance at the rules, but I don't like it when I get this stuff. Then we can sort of try and come up with solutions to present your next.
Okay, so next being the twenty-third. Uh.
By the twenty-second.
You have, you'll have the update of the rules by the twenty-second, so nice of you.
I'm pretty pleased with myself for that.
Sunday, Napvils.
I need something to fill in for you.
I got it.
So we have the.
I just looked like you wanted to kill me.
So the agenda should include the rules of procedure and the Murrell. Request on condition fourteen.
I don't, I don't need.
Plus whatever else is there.
I don't wanna like continue our meeting further, but that was the condition that we hemmed and hawed over. To extend the road and without the applicant here, I just wanted to clarify. We're considering changing it because of a change in guard of who originally requested that condition versus who is now. In that position and their viewpoint of that condition is different than. The original, so we, we spent a lot of time reviewing and probably like tweaking that condition language.
Hmm, we did.
That's why I wanted to. Yeah, read the, the volume of stuff we created, the materials that were provided to you, the code. It's tough, fire codes written in a manner that gives the ability to these individuals to waive or require. Here, with, just like the board on approvals and denials with findings, here's my reason why, why you support that. And this one at the time was pretty specific by a previous regime of, nope, this is absolutely required.
Right.
No consideration.
Change in interpretation.
And, and now we have a little bit of interpretation.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to make sure I understood that.
Reputation from town staff or from the fire chief?
Um. I'll be honest, I'm not totally convinced the previous regime, I think it came down to code enforcement officers' opinion. And that particular individual at that time said, this is how it is, option A is be compliant with my requirement. Option B is go seek a waiver from the state, which you're not gonna get without my blessing, so here we are.
Hmm.
I, I, I don't think he said that, but that's generally what was the process, right? And now we have, well, what if I support it with this letter from this individual, and what if I get it with this individual and. Put the sherry that says it's gonna be built by this point in time. And with that clause that's already written into the fire code and your review of it, is there possibility for a different interpretation? That's what was.
Just so I understand, and the first review of, primary concern is that we have two points of access. And what has? So at that time, the, it was a definitive, we must have two points of access.
Oh, more than thirty units, a single entrance.
Here on a single entrance. So.
And so, right, so they had phase one and they were given building permits. And the concern is now you're gonna have residential. Resident living there, and then they build phase two, so they were like, well, we can hold them for thirty forever until that full load. Sure, that's kind of what we thought.
Understood, so, so you get partial completion, risk of partial completion. You also have a situation that now we have a chief, may have been the same chief at that time, I don't know, I don't know the answer. That's saying, actually, we're okay with it, put in a hammerhead and we don't care.
Not the chief.
Thank, well, he stated, the statement from the fire chief stated that he could, he could adequately service.
No, the chief wasn't requiring the full rows.
That's what I'm saying, now, now we have a letter from the fire department saying, we don't care, we can do our job.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Right.
And then the other considerations that we would have to take in, in the play would be whether or not it matters to us if there's a thoroughfare of any kind, that's rude. Cause obviously, once you get to a certain level, you've got in, potential of incomplete projects, but if, if now you're trying to move. Twenty-nine homes in and out of a small area, you could create other challenges.
Well, you're gonna have sixty homes on one road. Uh, yeah.
Fifty-eight.
You know, and the thinking is.
Congestion points.
If, yeah, and it's conjunction point, the, the rule is for fire access. If you got a fire on the first house, how are the other? Six to fifty-nine gonna get out of the neighborhood, if the fire trucks are blocking the road. But these roads are big and, you know, they're designed for full town specs.
Then on which side of the fire hydrant's on, I've got fires on it.
Well, I think that's.
Fire state, yeah.
I've got, I've got shoulder and curb and.
No, but from your last question, if you, if, if the hydrant's on the south side and the fire's on the right, left, uh, north side, you just close the road.
Oh, yeah. And they're apparently comfortable with that.
A fire department doesn't care.
Oh.
It's gonna be fifty-eight houses.
That's why you had limits on Poldestech, like, it's the number of units.
Yeah.
Emergency services provision or the ambulance that needs to get down there, because somebody just had a heart attack or their neighbor died.
Yeah, it's not, it's not a, I get a, a vengeance issue, it's.
Yeah.
Now, I have a comment in, in, while the applicant's here, but it's more of a general comment. I think we need to consider as a board with the rear elevation of some of these multiple unit houses look like. Because from the road, it's flat, it looks like a barracks now, the, the, I'm, I'm sorry, from, uh, twenty-one.
Yeah. I know, that's what you're talking about.
And there's a, I think in, there's, there's a development on Middle Cheshire Road.
The aesthetics are not.
Yeah, the rear elevations on some of these multiple unit. Um, dwellings from the rear look awful. Where they, they're out of proportion with the single family homes that surround. So, so, and then, I mean, to make a comparison, you got the development Cheshire Glen. Um, the, the, the architecture of those units are almost three hundred and sixty degrees per round. And whether you come in down here, street extension, or you're going through development, they look, they look good and. I, I think are much more pleasing in timeless, um, in their architectural style.
That one, that one out, it's facing where. It's just. Pops up, it's almost.
Well, because they're, in, in this case, I think, I think what, what certainly I didn't realize was. How much that road was going to be elevated? To be able to get that sewer pitch all the way back to, um, first floor, twenty-one.
So either way, you don't get a say in our, or style. That being said. Well, one.
In keeping with the community.
Yeah.
Well, the planning board doesn't have authority over to sign an art. One, two, it's already been.
I would, I would have made it general, this isn't necessary, this was used as an example.
Hey, huh, I've got a plan. The only way in, unless it's a specific situation or where there's a code provision, it's a planning board has to review the shoreline. Plan and for the following standards, uh, that you get, you have leverage for architecture or design. Um, is when they, you have something to give that they want, for example, condition of the fourteen, so. Uh, you talking about the Murrell's objective? No. When they're here, say, wait, hey, would you put a fence up, a screen and fence? So that we don't have to look at the back of your ugly buildings? That's, they probably were already going to, hope this.
No, no, if, if, if that is, uh, that was, that a conservation subdivision? So was there some special, I wasn't on, was there some special approval by the board to allow? It, it was originally a single family.
Yeah.
Uh, subdivision, right? Okay, so is there a, an element that the board has to approve? To be able to do a conservation? Or is that a right by?
Yes, there's, yeah, there's like open space land. It, as long as that remains intact, everything in the footprint of the building is still, I guess, to some degree. Consideration.
But if, but if the community around this is all single family homes and now this conservation subdivision. Puts multiple family units together, how is that consistent?
Backwards now, I was already, this, this board at the time of that review made that determination.
Oh, I'm, I'm saying in the future, this is, I, I, I'm not talking past, I'm using. The question with, and they're doing a phenomenal job, they're quiet, I don't have a problem with it, but I'm just saying, what I've noticed. Which wasn't apparent from the plans was. Uh, now we have units that are massive in comparison with nice, or the single family homes around. So how in the future does my presence on have an influence to say, we need to think about this before this happens again?
So, like, so you do have say over community character before you approve of conservation subdivision. Um, but in terms of. From a more general perspective on architectural design, you have to have leverage in order to get a say in that. And you usually do, there's usually a waiver.
I'm not saying you're, you're.
You know, threatening or forcing them, they can say no, um, but they know that you can say no if there's something that's discretionary of the present planning board. You, they have adequate traffic access, you have to say that, you know, you're free that they have that.
I think nobody brought a unit that's really. Yeah.
Good time, right? Well, it's, it's, it. You sell the house from the front.
But you can ask for things like, hey, you know.
Rear elevation, you.
Can you, yeah, but in a good sense, would you be willing to put screening, either, you know, landscape screening also, you can ask for stuff.
I think that, that project loads a lot of the answer, so I, I'm sure it's not any of it.
They'll dispense some, their shape, their, their residents don't want.
One last question on this issue, those are money, construction, they're, they're attempting to use that road for the construction.
You mean from the pier's, but no, but I, yeah, this.
Now, if you use, if they had a construction in back, the parking area.
It's phase one.
Just put.
It's a tunnel very good.
Yeah, okay, so what?
Right.
But I'm saying to reduce the amount of traffic on that, big subdivision, on single access. If they have a construction. Parish street extensions, it would preclude any construction equipment, they do construction of the homes. Using that, that single access, that'd be less traffic.
They don't wanna build that.
It doesn't have to be built to town standards, it just has to be, just has to be able to, you know, stone.
Costs them a lot of money, though, as your deliveries come in over by Piers Brook, so ask the question.
Uh, yeah, that, I, I thought maybe they might address that in their request to.
They have zero.
Sorry.
At this point. So they're gonna push all the traffic for.
I like.
Right? That's single access, well as the construction.
I was off.
They're gonna be moved right into.
Let me read it. All right. Good meeting, folks.
Yeah, wait, I'll make a budget at eight oh nine.
Second, pushing second. God, be careful out there.